Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December Middlesex County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to ask Mr. Dwayne Jesse if he could open the meeting with prayer, followed by Matt Walker leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is my head in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for just waking us up this morning, giving us another day, dear Lord. And dear Lord, let's pray for the Bush family of the passing of a 41st president. Keep them in prayer. And dear Lord, let us pray for our service men and women overseas and help keep them out of harm's way. This is my prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Would all citizens of our nation rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome a nice crowd of folks to our meeting and hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving and wishing, looking forward to Merry Christmases and Happy New Years, because we won't be back together as a board until the 2nd of January. And my next announcement no longer needs to be made because John Koontz was en route from a job in Maryland and was going to be late, and he's just about a minute late. So we're in pretty good shape. John, page made it? All righty, item one is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any changes, any concerns, any alterations with regards to that? In that case, the Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion seconded.
Motion duly seconded. Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. So ordered. At this point, we will open the meeting to public comments. Please bear with our three-minute time limit per person, and when you come up, state your name and address for the record. Don't everybody get up at the same time.
Good afternoon.
Didn't thought it would be first, but I guess sometime the best go first.
For the record, name and address, please. We know you, boy.
Yeah, Louis Briggs, 1034 Hettis Road, Locazil.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you for the three minutes, but I might go a little bit over, but bear with me. Trying to catch my breath, getting old. I want to back you up a little bit to April 24th of this year by the Sinclair Walker Highway marker. Okay, so what I would like to do, I think, no more than fitting while I got everybody in here, all the supervisors. First, I'd like the opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors, especially Matt Walker, who guided me in the right direction. And he was a good inspiration to me. I said, Louis, you go for it, and you never know. And you see what we end up with. I put this down as a number 10 of the achievement in the county for the year. Number 10, that's high. From 1 to 10, that's high. And I appreciate what you all done. And especially Dr. Gretz, he was a good help. And I'd like to thank him and his school boat for what they've done. They were there with me all the way. And I also like to give a special thanks to my committee members of the NAACP. And they stayed with me. At times, they didn't thought it was going to go where it did, but it did. You all came out, everything worked out perfect. We had a good meeting now at the school. God is great. And I'd like to say, this is for everybody. You make a difference. Your great generosity have had a profound and lasting impact on the recognition and honor of Saint Cloud Walker. And your willingness to share both your time and your talent by working on the Saint Cloud Walker Highway Marker Committee and says a lot for each of you as an involved citizen. And your willingness and generosity goes a long ways in helping others to speak out on both your strength and your quality of your character. It's a great impact. And let me tell you one thing else. The county, other counties are looking at what we have done, what we've done. It went a long way. You might not hear them speak about it, but a whole lot of them is going back doing similarly the same thing we have done. So, but that's a great deal. And I had, wherever I go, y'all did a good thing in Middlesex, you know, from different citizens, not in this county, you know, from other counties. And they're going through doing the same thing. But the last thing I'd like to tell you, I wish you and all your family a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And that's from the bottom of my heart. And may peace of the Lord be with you throughout the year. And I'm looking forward to be in here next year with you again. Y'all have some pretty faces up there, so I'm going to be right back here. 2019, I'm going to be right back here again.
Thank you, sir. We'll see if you can get you an appointment to an optometrist and get that vision correct.
No, hey, it is what it is, and it's beautiful. God didn't make nothing like it.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next citizen, please.
I'm Angeline Frame. My address is 820 Gloucester Road. I own Historic Leafwood with my husband. And I'm here today kind of as a preload to the hearing that you're going to have about the designation of Saluda as a historic district. So as a citizen and a homeowner here in Saluda, I would just like to let you know that I fully support Saluda being designated as a historic district. I think it's something that all of the board members should certainly look at and approve the small amount of budgeting that it would take from the county to have this go forward. It would certainly help me as a business owner, not just as a homeowner, because I have a wedding venue at Historic Leafwood. And we have grown that business this year. We had six weddings, and we're booking right now for next year. So we're bringing in tourism to the county and to Saluda. And it would certainly be beneficial to us to be able to market to our clients that we're in the historic district. So that's why it's very important to me. Not only that, when we bring a lot of these people into the county that are getting married at our venue, and they're bringing all their guests, and they're shopping right here in town, they're going to the convenience store, they're going over to Food Lion, you know, we send them down to, of course, Urbana, you know, we promote that whole area as well for accommodations, restaurants, shopping. So I think it is something that would be very beneficial to all of us to be able to, it would be something we'd be proud of, to be able to say that we're in a historic district. I think it would raise value to some of these homes that are sitting here for sale as well, because I think when you have that designation, again, it, people tend to look at that more as impressive as a historic district. And I know that, of course, Urbana has that designation, as does Deltaville. And now that I live here in Saluda, I certainly think that Saluda should be included in that designation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next citizen, please.
I'm Beth Johnson. I'm also a resident of Saluda, and I'm just here to say that we're also in favor of the historic designation. We're concerned about the property values going down. We're concerned about all the big old houses that sit on the market for a really long time, and so we think it would be a good thing for the board to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, please?
Hi, I'm Carol King. I think I know all of you, and I hope you know me. I am, in this capacity, I'm President of the Middlesex County Public Library. I'm here simply today to introduce you to our Executive Director, Carrie DeSantos, who you may not know. Carrie is here to give you a little bit of an update on what we've accomplished this year for the library and for the county. So, I'm fast.
And thank you for having us here. And I just wanted to kind of give you kind of our quick and dirty statistics from the last fiscal year for the library. These are not super complicated. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call or stop by either one of our library branches. Obviously, right now, I'm not asking for money. I just want to show you kind of the good things that we are doing for the county and also for the people who have library cards here but are actually not residents. They are weekenders, they have summer cottages here, they are boaters coming in, especially to Deltaville, from all over the world. And they are repeat customers, so they decide to get a library card. And we think that's pretty neat. I also want to welcome all of you to the libraries, both in Deltaville and in Urbana. I noticed that only two of you have active library cards. So please, please, feel free to come in and get a card. I will even cut you the deal of for free.
Carrie, did they have any overdue books?
Matt walked in and found them.
But you may have found one.
And again, I just want to extend a welcome to all of you. Come by, you know, see what we're about. We're more than just books. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens with a public comment?
I'm Scott Johnson. I own 595 General Porter Highway here in Saluda. And I'm a little curious as to what makes the property a historic location. My property was built in 1929. Man down the street, his was built in the 1860s. I'm not sure what makes it, you know, historic. But having said that, I would like to understand, the letter I got says you don't have to seek permission to make any changes to your property, including the demolition of a building. Does that include additions or improvements to the existing structure and including adding a new structure? That's the only concerns that I've got. Otherwise, I'm in support of this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, please? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period, move on to item three, the Constitutional Officers' Reports. We have a Treasurer's Report only, pages 35 through 37 in your packet. Moving down into item four, the first is VDOT report by Joyce McGowan. And I don't believe that I see her or a representative here, so if they show up later in the agenda, we'll let them come forward. But I do see Dr. Peter Gretz in the back, and he's next.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Walker, Ms. Muncie, citizens. I have one item of business and appropriation request, and at the risk of being redundant, because I feel like I explain this every time I do federal funds, I'm going to go ahead and explain briefly the reason for the request. All of our, excuse me, all of our federal funds come to us through grants, and those grant applications are due from the schools into the offices from which they originate in July. So they all have to be done, completed, approved by the school board, and submitted July 1. The actual allocations that the government gives us, we don't receive until they trickle in. They start in September and they go, well, in this case, December. And so what they advise us to do is to base our application based on the previous year's allocation. We do the application, and then as we get those real numbers, I come and I ask you for an appropriation that may be a little bit above or a bit different. So we've been doing those this year. This is, this is the Title V Rural and Low Income Funds, so that's the reason for the request. This is, this is just aligning the true amount to the requested amount. Okay.
That would be for FY 2019-25?
Yes.
Did you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve budget supplement request FY 2019-25.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion?
Yes. How much is it?
$27,051.
Ninety-six.
And ninety-six cents. And it's, this fund is pretty new to us, and we've used it to begin the summer, summer school program that we've never had before. We started it last year at the elementary school.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to, this is, to be clear, this is to appropriate monies received from the federal government.
Yes. They just flow through. Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you. And then if I could, I just have a little bit of information to share with you. I'm going to, as I always do, I'm going to send this list of upcoming events. It's holiday season, so you have opportunities to hear a lot of music and to see some presentations if you'd like to. I'll call your attention specifically to a doubleheader on the 14th, when you can come and see The Mousetrap at the High School by Agatha Christie and catch girls' basketball game, right there in the same building. So I'll give this to you. And then I'm very excited to, you're going to see, I think, in The Sentinel soon, a story about this, but one of our teachers at the middle school, Sinclair Walker, Lanny Ashberry, has recently been, you may have seen on TV, she's recently received a very prestigious award. The Sanford Award Teacher Award Program chooses one recipient from every state, and then the District of Columbia as well. And so our own Ms. Ashberry was selected out of all the teachers in Virginia to represent Virginia in that award. So we're very proud of her and excited about her competition in the national competition, because they do have a national winner as well. And then finally, I'm going to share an enrollment report with you. And my understanding is that maybe past superintendents did this monthly, and I wasn't aware of that. So if you've been thinking to yourself, where's the enrollment? My apologies. If you were thinking conversely, thank goodness, he doesn't do that anymore. I, I'm happy to stop. But I do want to share this with you with a little bit of a, a little bit of context about enrollment, very briefly. When I came to Middlesex, I noticed that as I looked at our average daily membership, it fluctuated more than I had ever seen in another division. And I think the reason for that is that we have a significant part of our student population that's transient, and they move from county to county sometimes because of rent, other issues. And so it, this, this year is not unlike past years. However, our funding from the state is based on two snapshots. So the state looks at how many students we have enrolled. After subtracting preschool students, we don't get funding for those. Subtracting students who are enrolled in day treatment programs such as Faison and autism centers, things like that. Once they subtract those students, they get what they call an adjusted daily membership number. And they take a snapshot September 30th of how many that is. And then they take another snapshot March 31st. And it's kind of like those programs that some people do with the power company, where you say, I'm not going to pay for the actual power used, I'm just going to pay you a specific amount that I can count on every month. And then at the end of the year, if you paid too much, they give you some back. And if you didn't pay enough, you owe them a little bit of money. Same thing happens with the state. Our budget is due, the school board gives you a budget sometime in February or in the spring, and it's based on our best projection of what that number is going to be. And, and we've done pretty well in past years. Last year, we ended up with 1197. That, that was our actual funded number from the state. We had built our budget on 1180. So we built our budget on 1180 again. Two things happened this year that have taken me a little bit by surprise. Again, the fluctuation is not odd, but we, we brought, we graduated an abnormally large senior class, and we brought in an unusually small kindergarten class, 75 students. Most of our classes are between 90 and 100 students. We graduated 110, we brought in 75. We've also had several students that have transferred out of the county, and we've gone through every single record to find out what's happening. And almost all of them are due to rent situations or custody situations. I'm telling you all this because I don't want, and obviously, I've spoken to Mr. Walker about this, I don't want anybody to feel like I'm sounding an alarm. And at the same time, I don't want to have not addressed this and then surprise anybody in the spring, because our number with those two decreases is dangerously close to the number that we budget on. I hope I'm explaining that well. And so I have every anticipation that students will come in, as they have the past few years. They leave, they come back, and we usually end up about where we said we were going to. And hopefully, that's exactly what will happen. If it doesn't, we may experience a shortfall in state funding, because that snapshot on March 31st, if it reflected how many students I had today, it would be less than what I budgeted on. I hope that was clear. Okay. So I'm going to send this around, and you can see the actual numbers at every level, and if you'd like me to, I'll do that every month. I took way more than three minutes. Sorry. Any questions for me?
One question, if I may. Last year, we did a compensation study, and some of my constituents and others were asking us how we know what we're getting in terms of investing in our teachers in particular. How was the Sanford Award vetted? How, how did Lanny Ashberry come to be selected? And was she competing against every single county in the state?
Yes, to that question, she's competing against every county. The awards are done by nomination. I don't know who nominated her. Her principal was notified first, and then there was information gathered, and they went through their own internal process of vetting the different candidates. There's excessive information on their website about the program, and they have a national press release that I think will explain the details of how they select. It's, their, their byline to the award is recognizing the most inspiring teachers in the country. Their definition of inspiration and how they assign those points is all listed in the website. I don't have it all, you know, to, to give you, but that's a great question, and I'm more than happy to provide more information about it. So she was competing against students from all divisions, teachers from all divisions in the county.
Including West Point.
Including West Point.
Get that dig in, John.
Does she get to keep the money?
Yes, yes. She, it, it, the award comes, even if she doesn't advance in the national competition, but she gets a $10,000 award. Personal.
Personal.
Yeah. And she's already talked about purchasing some things for Sinclair Walker with that money. So I'll send these around, and, and thank you very much.
And you're, we're not encouraging long-winded reports, but staff and agency reports are not under the three-minute limits. Allow you some latitude there. All righty then, moving on to item C, Social Services is report only.
And Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me, I'd like to highlight a couple of aspects of Rebecca's report.
Okay, please.
Remick Morgan's provided a report to the board. First two items in the report, I think, it being the Christmas season, are probably appropriate to mention for the public here tonight. The agency has been allocating Christmas holiday wish lists for children and other adults and those with special needs in the community. To date, the Christmas friends have taken 291 individuals, and the remaining applications have been sponsored to date, and that's, that's good news. The agency is appreciative of the kindness of the community this holiday season. She wanted me to mention that to the community. Also, the Third Annual Christmas, Children's Christmas Party is December 8. All children in Middlesex are welcome to attend this free event. Our social services is doing a great job, and one of the things they make sure of is that the less fortunate in our community have a Christmas, and we appreciate that.
Do we know who the afternoon Santa Claus is?
I think we do.
Okay. This is Jeff.
He may be very close.
What kind of paramilitary vehicle does he drive?
Only in Middlesex.
Moving right along. Any other detail you find in pages 41 through 43? Item D is VIPSA recycling program. Is Mr. Geisler here? Otherwise, we've just got a report on pages 44 and 45.
He's supposed to be.
He's, he's probably on route.
Well, he would be another one if he gets, if he enjoys getting here late, we'll, we'll deal with it. And now we move on to our audit presentation.
Paul Lee.
Mr. Paul Lee's been doing our audit with Robinson Farmer Cox for years. They always do a real good job, and we enjoy having them. They usually keep us stepping and fetching, getting their financial information to them. And if you've seen him and his team in our Woodward, Woodward, thank you, conference room, kind of occupying the space, now you know what they were doing. Paul.
Very good, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here with you today to present the FY 18 audit report. As in past years, you've received an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, and we don't have any federal compliance matters to address or any internal control matters to address. There's three reports, three written reports within this, this document that basically says that. But we just wanted to summarize that for you, let you know that that's basically the same as last year. If you look at the report and you had your last year's report next to it, the report increased by about 37 pages this year. And the reason for that is the, there was a governmental accounting standards board proclamation or that we had to, had to adapt this year. It was number 75, and we, as, within, with, about 10 years ago, we had to add on the pension benefit obligation. Now we're adding on as well other post-employment benefit obligations. And so if you look at the first two exhibits in the report, they're on an accrual basis. And just as a result of the post-employment benefit obligations that we've added, your net position went down at the beginning of the year by about $250,000 and another $2 million for the schools. And that's all just actuarially developed pension benefit, pension benefit obligation data. You don't budget on that. Most of it's handled by VRS. VRS, you pay the rate they tell you to pay, and that will take care of that. But you have to report, every locality has to report their obligation within their financial statements. I just wanted to let you know that that's out there. It was new. It's added a lot of pages to your report, but you really don't budget on it at all. You budget on what's called a modified accrual, or really more of a cash basis. And so when you look at that in the report, and I think I issued a management letter at the request of Mr. Walker, that's just an update on your fund balance for the year. The general fund had a, on a side and fund balance at the end of the year, about 9.8 I think that was a little bit of a drop from the previous year, but, but it was still, if you look at trying to set aside 20% of that as, as cash flow from year to year, you still have money left over for appropriation if you wanted to appropriate additional items in '19. Don't recommend that, but I'm just saying that you, you have it there. It's about $3.2 million above the 20% level there that would be available. So that's the, the management letter. As well, the, I always like to point out the tax collection percentage, we're right at 97% this year, and it's always very high here. There's a 10-year schedule in the back, and that shows you where your tax There's a 10-year schedule in the back, and that shows you where your tax collections percentages go from year to year. And the reason why I pointed out is because if you ever dropped into the low 90s, or low 95, or something of that sort, you would begin to feel that in your local budget from one year to the next. So you really need to know as a board, when you set a levy, what your expectation is of collecting that money within the fiscal year. Other than that, I would take any questions you may have of me today.
Mr. Chairman, just for informational purposes, and please don't name any names, but it's my understanding some counties have collection rates as low as 80, maybe even lower?
Not in this area, but there are some, I would have to say. I've audited some that are in the 80s.
Are you or is anyone in your firm aware of the fraud that occurred in Dixon, Illinois in 2012?
I've heard something.
It was a town of about 15,000 people, average income about $35,000 a year, and their comptroller basically found a way to embezzle $53 million over the course of 10 or 12 years. Part of what was so shocking to me when I watched the documentary is they had an auditor.
Right.
But the auditor was rendering opinions that were getting longer and longer, in part because there were statutes that required compliance.
Right.
And people in my chair were having hard and harder time reading.
Rating the document.
Two hundred and four pages of audits. One of the things that was also disconcerting to me is, at the time, they were in compliance. There was the requirement for review on internal control effectiveness.
Right.
And can you speak to what requirements you're meeting on that front? You know, and I'm sure it was in the report, and I apologize for not.
No, that's okay. We do an internal control review annually, and we try to document every procedure on major revenues, major expenditures, whatnot, payroll, whatever, through the county. This is at the county, the school board, and social services, and actually document the procedures that are gone through. And then we actually test based on what we've accumulated on the procedures that are established, to make sure your local government or your local government employees are following those procedures. And then we're also analyzing, and that's comparison from year to year, your monies that come in. Why did this go up? Why did that go down? As well as really confirming all the money that comes from the state or federal government as well. So there's a lot of revenue work that goes in there, and a lot of expenditure work that goes in there also. Can't say that you can't totally avoid a fraud or detect it, but there's a lot of work that goes in to try to look at those areas.
Were there any flags for you or your team as you were doing this audit, and anything that even resembled, not just from a fraud perspective, but in general?
No, 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 there wasn't. I mean, if there was, I would have added into either the management letter or into the internal control letters as well. But there was nothing that came to our attention.
Thank you. Because I would also add that I felt like the way the executive summary read and the parts that I was looking to get to were front-loaded nicely, so by the time I fell asleep, I felt like I'd earned it.
Yes. Well, if you went through the whole 150-page document, you know, there's a lot of boilerplate, a lot of required things in there that really, as I said, if you look at the pension benefit and the OPEB, that probably covers half of the document that we produce.
Well, I suppose it has become sort of a time-honored tradition that at this point in your presentation, Jack Muller would rare back to his chair and say, "So does this mean we're in pretty good shape?"
It does. It does. You're not on the list, I would have to say. The audited Republican Council has had a stress list out for the last couple of years, and you're not one of the localities that is on that.
Well, as usual, thank you for your work, and we are glad to get a good report going.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And the board will need to vote to accept the audit.
I move that we accept the audit.
Motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
All righty. I see Melissa Welch right there. Is she gonna give us an election recap in person? We don't have to read it out of our packet?
Well, I, hi. How are you all doing? I was asked by one of my board members, "Have I ever been to the Board of Supervisors in giving an election debriefing?" And I'm like, "No, never been asked to." And they said, "Well, maybe you should do something like that." And I was like, "Well, I'm gonna be on the agenda anyway, so I might as well." So I did this little chart with statistics, and it's comparing the November 2018 election to our, like, 2014 election, because our elections run on a four-year cycle. First off, I'd like to publicly thank all of our officers of election. We can't do an election without their awesome abilities to volunteer. Some of them are here. They all did a really great job, and I'd also like to put in a little plug of, we're always looking for new volunteers. So if you know of anyone, your neighbors or any of y'all know of anyone, please send them my way. So the turnout statistics, can you scroll down a little bit? Is a little amazing to me, because it shows that the younger generation turned out a whole lot more in 2018 than they did in 2014, and the older generation dropped by 3.6%. I say older. 66 and older is the category, is how it was broken down. And in Middlesex, we have an older population, so it was just interesting to me. But overall, in November, we had a great day. But I did want to point out one thing. In 2015, you all that were on the board appropriated money for us to buy new election equipment. And in that, we had backup batteries as part of the package. And for the first time, we had to use it. In Urbana, they had a transformer that blew up on Rappahannock Avenue, and they lost power on Election Day. But due to our awesome officers of election and their great training, and our backup batteries that you all provided, we didn't miss a beat. We kept on voting, and everything was great. And we also had Dominion on speed dial with Virginia Department of Emergency Services also. But I'd just like to thank you all for that, because if we wouldn't have had the backup battery, it would have slowed things down a lot. And we had the town election going on that day, too. But do you all have any questions or observations about Election Day that you would like to ask?
The one volunteer that we thought we got out of the high school class, did he show up and volunteer?
He did. And my board approved, it's just a certificate that we're gonna present to him today at their meeting, so. And the officers in Urbana loved him.
Right.
All right, so to get down to real business.
Before you do, Melissa, maybe, just thinking about next year, maybe we'll do this, like, more than two days before Election Day, and maybe get some of your election officers to come out and talk about what it means to them to volunteer in that capacity, maybe make a better presentation than what you and I, what I did off the cuff with your tremendous support.
Okay.
John, just for the record, too, you're talking about a page program for high school students, or is this a volunteer thing?
Yes.
Just so that people know what's available for high school students.
If they're 18 or over, they can be paid, so then they're actual officers of election. But what he was speaking of is a 17-year-old that was volunteered to be a page.
Right.
So it's a volunteer program. They can get community service hours if they need, but.
So it's a page program available to 17 or above?
They need.
To be volunteers and to learn about the election.
Yes. And it has to be approved by the principal and their teacher and a parent.
Right. But that's available?
Yes, it is.
We were at the high school speaking to the civics class about the importance of voting, and it's anecdotal, but we went from 18 in 2014 that were age 18 up to 46, so there was either some eloquent speaking going on somewhere in the county.
The voter registration that we got that day, all of them voted. I went back and checked. So they did vote.
Well, just before you go to the rest on the administration of the election, I would like to point out that gratitude, and I think the board feels this way, not just myself, but for a very well-run office, at least from the perspective of a candidate and a citizen. And your work is the kind of thing that we would hear an awful lot about if something went wrong. But when things go well, we just say, "Oh, well, that's what, you know, Melissa does," and your volunteers do. So I think it's very important that we have a strong integrity and also efficiency in the electoral system, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for recognizing that.
And while you're soliciting more volunteers, we should probably recognize those volunteers. We have a pretty good roster of volunteers at all our polling stations, and don't we have local restaurants that contribute to them as well?
So my electoral board started a program called the POPS program, and what it does is they ask local restaurants to provide food to the precincts on Election Day. And it's a really good program, and we've gotten a lot of support. The issue that we run into is the location of our precincts to where the restaurants are. Churchview is a little bit out there, so they don't get as much support as, like, New Market and Delphil, they have a lot. But so we're working on, like, the logistics of it. But yes, we love our restaurants that support us. All right, so I'm here to ask for an appropriation for $2,340, and this is to employ a temporary part-time assistant for my office while I'm out on maternity leave. While a full-time assistant would be wonderful, I'm trying to be fiscally responsible in making this decision, and I hope that this temporary part-time assistant, working 24 hours, three days a week while I'm out, is gonna be enough support for Hope. I have no doubt in my mind that Hope can't run the office while I'm gone, but just the workload, she just can't handle it all. And she may get sick also. So.
Is it not 251901 with the FICA?
Yes. Betty corrected me on that. So the actual.
And it's a transfer rather than an additional appropriation. We have money in the contingency fund that we'll transfer over if you approve this.
Would the chair entertain a motion?
Absolutely.
I'd enthusiastically move that we pass, approve the budget transfer request, FY2019-8, in support of one of our staff members who's going through a major life event that we should all congratulate her on.
Can we have an equally enthusiastic second?
I would like it equally enthusiastically.
We have both an enthusiastic motion and an enthusiastic second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered.
I would like to enthusiastically think.
Thank you, Melissa. Moving on to item G, I believe Marilyn South is gonna come forward and talk to us about the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and Middlesex County Museum and Historic Society, but.
I'm supposed to introduce Marilyn South to you, as if you didn't already know her. But I'm Robert Mongu, and I'm the president of the Middlesex County Museum and Historical Society. And just by way of information, I participated in Urbana getting an historic district quite a few years ago, and was the first chairman of their town's Board of Architectural Review. We're not asking for a Board of Architectural Review for Saluda at this time, and that seemed to be one of the questions that was coming up from an earlier speaker. Saluda is not getting that kind of treatment, but we do wholeheartedly support the idea of the board funding, the process that has to take place in order for Saluda to become so designated as an historic district. And I personally can relate that two of my ancestors have lived in Saluda, and two of the houses that are one of the justifications for it being placed on the register. The Leafwood House that has previously been spoken for was the home of one of my great aunts, and next door to it, the Puller House, was also the home of one of my great uncles, Dr. Horace Hoskins. So I have a personal background interest in seeing Saluda become an historic district because of that family connection to the place. The Hoskins family came to America in 1620, and Hoskins Creek in Tappahannock is named for Bartholomew Hoskins, the original Hoskins immigrant ancestor. And the two residents of Saluda who were descendants of his are a part of the history that is justifying the request to place this town, or this place, on the register of historic landmarks. And I'd like to introduce Marilyn South, our executive director, who is a volunteer and works extremely hard to make things happen for our museum, and I hope that you will be supportive of her in appropriating the funds necessary to make what we're asking for happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate this chance. Coming early to make this budget request, because we want the community and you all to have plenty of time to think about it and sort out what it's all about. There are a lot of misperceptions out there. So the purpose for me coming today is to submit a cost-share budget request for $6,000 from the museum to you all to match $6,000 the Virginia Department of Historic Resources has allocated towards making Saluda an historic district. Want to give you the background behind this, because it's a very rich background. Goes back to 2012. After the devastation of Hurricane Sandy in October of 2012, the Virginia Department of Historic Resources received funding from the National Park Service to review the state's inventory of historic properties. The Virginia Department of Historic Resources identified seven counties in the state of Virginia that were underrepresented related to architectural resources. Middlesex County, the architectural focus was placed on identifying properties that were located in flood-prone areas near the coast, properties dating to the early history of the county that had yet to be captured in inventory records. We also, properties that were more comprehensively covered, the full geography of our county, and properties that were representative of the county's historical and architectural trends. The Virginia Department of Historic Resources completed that architectural survey at the cost of $67,000 in August of 2016. Before doing the survey, the department did a presentation and received approval from this board. The survey began in October of 15 and was completed in August of 16. And after the completion of that survey, one of the recommendations was that Saluda be further studied as a possible historic district. And the documentation work that was done at the cost of $67,000, the database of that is good for five years. Why ask the designation and ask the Board of Supervisors to fund this designation? Local history is unique to each county, and our Commonwealth and Virginia Tourism, among others, recognizes the impact of packaging that history. Middlesex County has played a large role in the preservation of our local history by maintaining our county records and preserving or repurposing our historic structures. This is responsible leadership that you all have demonstrated, that leads through example. And rural coastal towns are beginning to see a renaissance, and the identification of other historic places within our county or community identifies the uniqueness of our place. This year, Middlesex County is celebrating 350 years of history, and a large part of that history occurred right here in Saluda. We became the county seat of government in 8... became the county seat of government in eighteen forty-nine. That's one hundred and sixty-nine years of being our county seat. The recognition of Saluda as an historic district strengthens the impact for local tourism, local heritage tourism. And what the benefits become for the entire county, and the designation can increase the potential for increased visitors who support local businesses, organizations, and become potential full or part-time residents. The designation serves as an example of local leadership supporting and honoring our unique history and should be part of our local economic engine. We began publicizing all of this in May of two thousand and seventeen, numerous articles on our website, that kind of thing. And I can date all of that for you, but I don't want to take time up to do that. And it's in on our websites. Personally, I have spoken with Jimmy Ward, attorney-at-law here in Saluda, who endorses it. You heard from Angeline Frame, owner of Leafwood, who runs business here. Beth Johnson you heard from. Tim Norman, who has Norman's Produce, is very much in favor of this. W. D. Edwards, local resident, is in favor of this. Hallie Holmes shared with me, and I spoke to Reverend Fred Holmes of Historic Antioch Baptist Church is in favor of, and the owners of G's Country Store and Deli. Also, Val Gray, whose family owned the property of Oakham, which the high school complex now sits on the property of Oakham, also endorses the district. In conclusion, the Middlesex County Museum and Historical Society hopes that the board will fund this one-time request for six thousand dollars to fund the final documentation needed to designate Saluda as an historic district. The museum has every desire to work with this board to promote one of our richest resources goes back many, many years, sixteen forty-two. And we thank you all for this. And I'd like time to introduce Elizabeth Lipford. And I will let Elizabeth from the Department of Historic Resources share with you her title and answer one of our guests here, comment period, to speak about any concerns or questions you may have.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's good to be here today. And I was glad to be able to hear about the Sinclair Walker marker. Is that a Virginia State Highway marker? Good. That's one of our most popular programs. So I am Elizabeth Lipford with the Department of Historic Resources. I work in the Eastern Regional Office, which includes the Middle Peninsula and all the coastal counties of Virginia. To answer your question earlier about the historic district, there are no restrictions for state and national register designations. You can demolish a property. We hope that you don't, but you can. You can add on to it, change it, build a new building on your property. There are no restrictions. It is a mostly honorary designation. And what I've passed around is a little bit about historic district designation, what it does and doesn't mean. And I have some more of these handouts if anyone here would like one as well. But I just want to make two points to add to what Marilyn's already said. One, going back to the Hurricane Sandy grant. Hurricane Sandy was devastating to the East Coast, more to our northeastern states than it was to Virginia, thank goodness. But the Historic Preservation Fund, which is managed by Congress, did make, they made a one-time allegation to all the states that were affected for monies. Initially, or actually, the priority was to repair historic properties that had been damaged by the hurricane. So that was the first priority. Let's fix those historic properties that were damaged. And historic property was defined as a property listed on the National Register of Historic Places, including properties and historic districts. And so one, one thing to keep in mind as you consider this, and certainly not hope that we ever have anything like Sandy again, but should we, and should there be funds available to repair historic buildings, then property owners in both Urbana and Saluda, if it's designated, would be eligible to apply for funds for repair. And, you know, there aren't many grants out there for historic buildings. But every once in a while, they come around, the federal government, sometimes the state, and the first criteria always is, is it designated historic landmark? That's the first benchmark that needs to be made. So that's something to keep in mind, that could be available. The other thing that we are having to learn more about than I ever thought we would is flood insurance. You know, we are having lots of issues with weather events. I'm learning about FEMA and flood insurance and hundred-year flood plains, and what does that mean for historic properties that are threatened? And we're, just a brief example is, we're working with a property owner of historic property in Matthews County who is, wants to revitalize a historic building and also wants to have flood insurance. And FEMA has said, you know, you have to raise the building in order to be able to get flood insurance. And that's problematic for a number of reasons, including the cost of that, but also how it would change the integrity of the historic building. So in looking at FEMA's regulations, they do have a process for applying for variance to certain regulations if you're historic property. And so we're, and in fact, that program will be managed by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. And they're putting in a process for property owners of historic properties to apply for a variance, if appropriate, for flood insurance. So that's just, those are just a couple of the things that, to think about as, as you consider this. As Marilyn mentioned, there was a substantial investment in Middlesex County. We considered it a high priority. Sixty-seven thousand dollars is a lot of money to identify historic resources, and we were glad to be able to do that project. So this is sort of a follow-up, sort of finishing one piece of that. There was a report that was produced, and Saluda was the one historic district recommended for designation. And so with the state grant program that we administer, we can match funds to get the project done. And we administer the project, so it's not an administrative burden on the county. It is, it is a competitive process, but we do give priority to projects in counties where there's already work that's started. So this would be considered a high priority because of the survey that's already been done. The other thing I want to mention is the importance of our courthouse towns in Virginia. Almost all of our historic courthouses are already designated. This building that we're in is on the Landmarks Register. But a lot of, and a lot of our courthouse towns have historic districts. It's really important. They are the seat of our government. Next year, in two thousand and nineteen, we're gonna commemorate two, the four-hundredth anniversary of two significant events, one being when the first Africans arrived in Virginia in sixteen nineteen, and the other being the first General Assembly in the New World, in the colonies in sixteen nineteen. And from that grew Jamestown, then Williamsburg, our local county courthouses. And so I think it's very important to recognize all of those county seats of government. Recently, we've worked with Matthews County on historic district, Suri County. This year, we're doing a project with Cortlandt for Southampton County. We've just done Princess Anne, what used to be Princess Anne County is now in Virginia Beach. Also, Montross, Westmoreland County, is interested in having their courthouse area designated. So we do consider that to be an important thing as well. But anyway, I'm supposed to be here to answer questions, not talk. So, yes, sir?
No, my question is with the Saluda Historic District, how far does it go out? Is there any boundary lands? And that's why I want to stand in, you know, can a business put a store, you know, any type of business like a McDonald's or whatever, in the historic district, I mean, in that area?
Yes. Okay. So the first, are there boundaries? When the survey was done in two thousand and sixteen, the consultant that did the work did recommend boundaries. And those are in the report. And they take in pretty much the two main roads that come through town. And then boundaries are also determined by the largest concentration of historic buildings. And so I think there are fifty-two resources that are within the boundaries. And then the other thing is a period of significance. So what is the historic period for this town, which will begin, usually begins with the earliest resources, probably in the eighteenth century, and extends into the early twentieth century, kind of, what is the development of this town? So yes, there are recommended boundaries right now, which could change a little bit when it comes to the final designation. As far as new businesses coming in, yes, they can come in. I mean, of course, all local laws, local zoning applies. Historic district designation doesn't change anything that is already required for new construction. But there would be no restriction on that. And the other thing I did, in, I was reading through the nomination reports for the properties that are already designated for this county. And most of them were designated in the seventies and eighties, maybe early nineties. And they're a great representation of your early colonial buildings, your eighteenth century, your churches, your homes, and the nineteenth century. But there's not a lot from the late nineteenth and early twentieth century, which would be captured here in this town. Antioch Church and the school, very much an important part of the African-American story for this county. That would be captured in this district nomination. So I think that there's a lot to be told in the county history that could, that could be done in this nomination. The nomination does produce a scholarly research document, which can be used for educational purposes, heritage tourism, walking tours, as was mentioned by Angeline. If people are coming here to visit, if you had a brochure that says, here's a walking tour of our historic district, points out the courthouse and some of the other buildings of note, you know, that's something that, certainly you can do that anyway. But it is, it is nice to say that it's designated a Virginia and national landmark.
I have a couple of questions. I think this property is very valuable in terms of history, and I think our history is very important to Middlesex County, and we want to be able to tell that story. And I kind of look at this program as, in a way, cataloging of buildings that are then put in an organized document, in the same way that you might catalog books and put them on the shelf in a library, and making that information available to everybody.
Yes.
So my question, well, there's three now. Once you get the information, you talked about that, and then developing walking tours or making this information available, would that then, with the historic designation, does that make it easier for, like, our Historical Society and museum people to get help with maybe a walking tour, developing those resources? Or is that part of this? In other words, once, if you have a document that's, you know, in your office and in the museum, you know, that's not very accessible. Is there anything in this thing that we're talking about today that makes the information about the history of this neighborhood here available to everyone?
Yes. Well, if it's listed in the Virginia Landmarks Register, then it is available online through our website. Once it's listed in the National Register, it is available online through the Park Service website. And then certainly, you can make it available electronically, locally as well. And then the information, you can use it however you wish.
Okay. But then that would come to the locality to make that available as we wish?
Yes. And we also maintain a database of historic resources for the whole state called VCRIS, Virginia Cultural Information Resources. And so all that information would be in there as well.
Okay.
And that's, you know, and that database is used by state and federal agencies all the time. I was seeing VDOT on your agenda reminded me, anytime they think about road improvements, one of the first things they do is go to our database and see where are the historic properties. You know, what do we need to be aware of as we plan? So it is definitely a good planning tool as well as a good educational tool.
Okay. And then, like I said, the history is important, but it's also, this is our government center for now and for the next century. And I want us to be able to use it and go into this, you know, clear-eyed. So I understand that there's no restrictions for the property owner, say, on a private home. And that the restrictions, though, do seem to apply to government-funded projects, not a restriction per se, additional study, environmental study-
Right.
-on the impact.
Yes.
So, for example, there's a vacant lot just to the left as you're looking at the courthouse. It's pretty apparent. If there was a development of that property that involved state or local, state or federal grant funds, what would that mean if we were in the historic district?
So- Well, there's lots of different regulations about that, state and federal. The ones I'm more familiar with are the federal funds. But those reviews are triggered by, not by listing of resources, but eligibility of resources. So, right, so if something is considered eligible for listing, it triggers the same review as if it were listed. So it wouldn't change, and, and the proposed Saluda Historic District has already been determined eligible for listing. And so if a federal grant, if you were to receive a federal grant to build something new on that lot, it would go through the same review and discussion as if it were listed. And that discussion would include compatibility of design. You know, it wouldn't say you couldn't do it, but how's it gonna be designed? What's the setback in the scale? Is it sensitive to the architecture of the historic district?
Okay. So that would be part of the conversation? That would be expected-
Yes. Yes.
-in the historic district.
And definitely for federal funds.
New construction that involved public money?
Yes.
Okay. If it was a private piece of property, a vacant lot on either one of these roads, and someone wanted to put up a house, they would only be restricted by the local ordinances or state orders?
Right. Right.
Okay. The other question, in terms of conforming or being restricted in any way, to what extent is the landscape protected? In other words, open space, you know, very old trees? What, how is that affected by this?
Not so much, unless it's a designed historic landscape, like a courthouse green. Or if there are historic landscape features that are known. Trying to think of an example in another district. Well, we just, we just listed one in Virginia Beach, a neighborhood called Cavalier Shores, in which there was a brick walkway and certain landscaping that was done as part of the design for the community. And so that landscape is considered historic and therefore worthy of preservation. But, but usually, it's, it's an identified historic designed feature. Trees, not necessarily, are, would be, you know, considered.
Okay. And, you know, in some communities, trees, certain trees are protected just by age or something, but that doesn't apply here. Okay. Because landscape features and, but we're not talking about that here in historical. So, and when you say the boundaries, they've been recommended and, and, you know, usually go by these two major roads, the intersection is what's being considered, and fifty-two resources. Once this application is complete, who has the final say on where those boundaries are? Is it the locality or is it DHR?
It's DHR, with input from the locality, input from the consultant that does the work. We, and then anything that comes before, comes to our agency goes before our Board of Historic Resources. They have the authority to list things on the register. They're appointed by the governor. We also have a state review board. They are appointed by our director. They also review everything. They also review everything before it goes to the National Park Service for designation. So there's lots of eyes that review every document.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I had one question. On your summary here, the fourth item says, provides financial benefits mainly in the form of tax incentives and easements. Of the four, I see some negatives that you're claiming it doesn't do, and some positives that are hard to quantify. Do we have anybody that's pursuing this because they're actually pursuing incentives or tax credits, or can they do none of that until it's in place?
If they were to, if you have people interested in the rehabilitation tax credit program for the state, you can pursue tax credits if it's eligible, which it is. But for the national tax credits, federal tax credits, it has to be listed. So that's not a motivation for this designation, but it would certainly be a benefit for property owners if they wanted to participate in that program. It's totally voluntary.
But, but right now you have local business owners, historians, museum-minded folks that are saying, this would be great, but you don't have anybody that's actually pursuing a project?
Just, just the museum here. No, no individual property owners.
And then, slightly unrelated, but I just noticed that on the way in from the north end of the county, we have some historical landmarks, like the one we put up for St. Clair Walker, that the paint is all off of them. Who, do you know what department we would contact to?
I think that VDOT is responsible for maintaining them.
I know them.
And, you know, I ask that question a lot, too, because I see some on my, my drive into work that are in the city of Richmond that have green algae all over them.
Well, they even seem like they're designed so that with a roll of black, you know, black paint and a roller in the right paint, it would restore it and it would look great again.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and I think that they're not out looking to repair or maintain them, but I think if they're notified of them, that they will do something. And I can, I can tell you that the new markers now are a better material, they have less deterioration.
That's it for me.
I have a couple. Go ahead.
I do, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, please. I apologize, I just wanted a little more, and maybe Marilyn, you can answer this. For the boundary, I'm very, I don't understand. Can you give us an idea of what you're looking at for the boundary? Are you talking like to the park and ride?
Sure, actually, let me, I'm going to grab my report, and I'll pass it around.
Because are you thinking like to the park and ride, or are you thinking, not that far? Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how much of Courthouse Road y'all were going down to. I'm like, to get an idea of the area.
This is the report that was prepared for the Hurricane Sandy Grant with the recommendation. And so there is a map in here. It's not, doesn't have great detail, but I think you know your community.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was my only question.
This is what is proposed. Courthouse being right in the center, and you see Antioch Church up there at the top.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to get an idea.
Goes out to the high school on one end.
That's actually very informative, thank you.
As we're considering taking a pencil and drawing a boundary line on the map, and potentially treating people on one side of the line differently than others because they'd be able to get grants or be able to do, isn't that sort of zoning, the other localities that you approached with this concept? Do they, like, go through planning and get a zone designated so that it's a legal animal, if you will, for the county or the city that it's in?
Very rarely do localities follow up with any kind of preservation zoning. Where you see preservation zoning most often are in large cities, like Richmond and Lynchburg, Roanoke, Petersburg. Very few rural counties or towns have local zoning, because frankly, it's, if you, if you, you put it in place, then you have to maintain it, then you need to have staff, you need to have an architectural review board, you need to keep up with it. So rarely do we see that happen as a follow-up to a state or national designation.
Because I'm from Petersburg, and I have a number of experiences.
Yes, yes, and we had a conversation about that, yes. And Petersburg does have local zoning.
Right. And I'm just sort of a practical guy. I understand the, how nice it is to be listed, and people can look you up, and they can come visit you and do those sort of things, but they're intangibles. I can't put my arm around them and say, here they are. The one tangible thing that I can put my arms around is the ability to get grants and monies, tax credits or whatever, to aid your properties. And in my experience, whenever money goes from this person to this person, this person has some expectations about what this person's going to do. And I just mention that because at some point in time, we could get down, as you and I discussed, the slippery slope of control, because people don't give people money without expecting.
Well, that's true. I mean, and there's no, there's no grant out there that doesn't come with, with some kind of manual of instructions. And so for historic resources, excuse me, if you're receiving a grant that, to make changes to a building, then those changes need to be in conformity with the Secretary of Interior's guidelines for rehabilitation. And then we work with those grant recipients to make sure their project is sensitive to the historic character-defining feature. So if you had a grant and you wanted to take off a historic porch with that money, that would probably not be approved. But if you needed to repair it and replace the porch decking and, you know, that type of thing, those, those types of things would be eligible.
Last question. Urbana's an incorporated town, so their, their historic district is not part of really what I would call county business, like Saluda will be, because Saluda's not an incorporated town.
Right.
Would it be prudent to vet this whole thing through our Planning Commission and Planning Department versus, because I don't feel qualified to decide, yeah, this, I mean, it's not even in my district, but I don't feel qualified to say it's a good idea, a bad idea, what it's going to be for, for citizens. What I would kind of envision is having the Planning Department bring something to the board and suggest that we do it or don't do it for these reasons, and then have a public hearing, and then move on to a potential appropriation for the inventory or whatever else. That would just be what my little brain would envision. It's a lot of process for this, I realize, but.
Well, certainly, we often work with planning commissions and planning boards as a first. You know, probably, we work most with planning commissions and local museums and historical societies. For example, the Cortlandt Project we're doing now is through Southampton County Historical We're doing a project in Essex County, and their Economic Development Office is involved in it. It's, it's all different scenarios, so. But certainly that, I mean, certainly input from the Planning Department would be good. Just to give you a little bit of a timeframe, so, of course, this is state money, so we have no guarantees until the General Assembly meets. But usually, they have approved our funding by the end of January. So the end of January 2019, early February, we will announce the availability of funds. And then any locality in Virginia can apply for those funds. And then usually, we have proposals in by the end of March or April. And so that's the timeframe to think about. Otherwise, you'll wait a whole nother year.
One final question from me. In discussion of the tangibles, the tangible of $6,000 that they would potentially be asking the county to, to contribute to the, to the inventory, and the tangibles that the folks in the district might be able to capture in tax credits or whatever else, do the citizens that want to be in these districts ever divide that money up for the cost of inventory and pay for it themselves, as opposed to asking their county to pay for it?
Sometimes there are, well, funds can come from anywhere.
I understand, I'm just wondering if they, from a practical standpoint, if they ever do.
Sometimes they do. We are, the project we're doing in Essex County right now, there's a local group called the Essex County Countryside Alliance, and they raised most of the money among the property owners within, this is a proposed rural district, it's huge, it's like 75,000 acres. And they raised most of the money within the community, and then it funnels through Essex County. The Southampton project we're doing is, the town contributed, they are an incorporated town, the county contributed, and the historical society raised, I think, 10% of the map. So it can be done any number of ways.
Right.
But it does, our contract is with the local government or a local PDC.
I'm just struggling a little bit, the same as you. You did say Urbana and Deltaville are both historic districts already?
No, I don't believe Deltaville is.
Deltaville's not.
Urbana and.
Urbano, yes, Urbano was listed in 1991, I think.
Do you have a sense of how many incentives they've been able to get since then?
I don't, I don't know how many people.
More than zero?
I don't know, but I can check. Now, the state tax credit program hasn't been around as long as the federal tax credit. And the federal tax credit is for income-producing properties only. So when we pass.
Hopefully, we have some in Urbana, but I guess what I'm saying is, I look at these, and we're trying to assess the tangible things that can come out of a program like this. It seems like we have a really good case study that you should either be ignoring or highlighting, and right now, we don't see anything about it.
Mm-hmm.
That's just where my head is.
Well, I mean, it's, it is a mostly honorary designation. And things like tax credits and easements are available to property owners if they want to do something like that. It's not really, it's not really the motivation to do the designation, but it is a benefit that is available. You know, we used to have state funds for historic properties. We used to be able to give out money a lot in the past to historic property owners. So then it was easier to say, yes, there's financial benefits, but they come every once in a while.
A property owner that wishes to make a change has the right to go ahead and make that change, but not apply for financial help?
Correct.
Or they have the right, if they're a historic building, to come to you and say, you know, I'd like to, to do this, but you would then, and I'm talking same you, meaning the government, would have the right to say, yes, we will give you 25% or 50% or some, some number in tax credit. However, you must put in a window similar to a window that you, you just, you're suggesting taking out.
Right, that is one example. But when some, when someone comes to us and says they want to do the tax credits, our first question is, well, what do you want to do? You know, what's your proposal? Give us your proposal. And then if we see anything that is, you know, problematic, then we'll negotiate that, start negotiating that. But there's no set rule about things.
Right.
So.
But.
But, I mean, yes.
But if, if they don't ask for the, if they don't ask for funds from the, from the government, then the government doesn't step in and.
Correct. But we're also available for technical assistance. And we hear from property owners a lot who just call our office and say, what's your advice? You know, I need to replace my roof, and, you know, what would be sensitive to my historic property? So we're available just to.
Yeah.
Provide guidance.
By the way, thank, thank you for everything that you've done.
Oh, sure. Well, thank you.
This is on the format as a, as a budget request. I'm presuming that that carries forward to our next budget deliberations after the first of the year?
Yes, unless you'd like to do it today.
I would, I would like for staff to take a little bit more look at this and for us to, my personal feeling, I'm not, not speaking for the whole board, but I'd like for our staff to vet this thing a little bit, because I don't, I understand what it would be like if it was zoning, and I understand the concept of not doing it in a sparsely populated area, but I would like for, I'd like for our staff to be comfortable with it, because sooner or later, there's something's going to come up.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I have a recommendation for the board if they'd like it.
Please.
Since it is a request that's more in line from the 2020 fiscal year, and they're actually here in December, we're going to have budget requests come in. I think our agency requests come in on February the 8th, is that correct, Betty?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it is. We could, if the board chose to do so, ask the Planning Commission to review the historic district. From a planning standpoint, not necessarily a zoning one, but a planning one. There's language in the Conference of Plan that addresses such historic reviews. That parallel review would take place while we're involved in a budget process, and you could entirely expect a report from the Planning Commission by the February meeting.
I would feel very comfortable with that.
That also will fall on the window of the timing of the funds and everything, too, the chance to get through the general assembly and everything.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, yes. And just one final comment to your comments about local zoning. Working with the city of Virginia Beach, they do have local zoning, they've had it in place since 1966. And when we did the Princess Anne Courthouse District, that had been a local district since 1968. And so they were already having to go to the city to review things. And so I asked their planner, I said, so when we designate a new district, like Cavalier Shores, which we're doing right now, are you going to follow up with local zoning just because you have it already? And he said, no, we would never do that unless the residents asked for it, unless the property owners want it, we're not going to go out and designate or put any more overlay zoning where it's not wanted. So I was glad to hear that.
And I'm glad you said that, because we have an example a little closer to home. King William County has historic overlay districts. And each and every one of them around the county, with the exception of the Courthouse District, was requested by the property owners that made up the district, if my memory serves. So our planning staff would have a parallel to at least look at as a benchmark and a reference.
Do we have consensus to move forward with the Planning Commission and sort of budget process and planning and deal with it later?
Yes.
Is that satisfactory, Mrs. South?
Yes, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
Since we have one of our Planning Commission members with us here tonight, is it too late to get it before them in December?
Um.
I mean, to start the review?
I can talk to Betty. Or we could call a special meeting perhaps.
Well, I think y'all have a meeting next Thursday, right?
I think they do, but it wasn't business, but I can check.
Okay.
If there isn't.
I don't think there's a December meeting, because there, there would have been one on December 13th.
Okay.
But I don't think there was any, any ordinance or anything to be considered.
Well, the board's budget calendar, as it's set now, has us adopting a budget in April. And if it looks likely that a $6,000 appropriation would be made from the county budget, I think the board would know that by March. And I heard a March deadline, is that correct?
Yes. Well, actually, you can certainly put in an application without having to fund appropriations.
Okay.
And we would, the project would start until fall, not when.
In the next fiscal year?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a little bit of time budgetarily to let the Planning Commission process move forward and maybe have an appropriation of the board want to contingent upon Planning Commission report.
All good?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Chip, I think we have the report there with you. I don't know if she wants that back.
Yeah, I think we have copies of that.
Okay. And I do not know Mr. Geisler personally, but I think that was the gentleman that I saw come in.
That was, Mr. Chairman. He, I believe, got caught in traffic a little bit, but he is with us now.
Thank you for taking me at item J rather than IMD. My name is Steve Geiser. I'm the Executive Director of the Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority. We are a regional governmental organization. We provide solid waste management and recycling services to our 10-member cities and counties. We are governed by a Board of Directors, which is made up of one member from each city and county. This board appointed Dutch, you have to help me with his last name, I just know him as Dutch.
Booken Camp.
Booken Camp, as, as a member, and Mr. Mansfield is our alternate. One of our projects is, we operate a solid waste management system for five counties on the middle peninsula, Essex, King William, King and Queen, Matthews, and Middlesex. Here in Middlesex County, the VIPSA staff works at the Stormont Facility, we operate that facility. In addition, we provide the compactors and the containers for trash disposal and recycling at the three convenience centers in Jamaica, Hartfield, and Deltaville. The, and I'm here today to talk about the recycling program and where we're at in the recycling world. We provide containers at the three, at the three convenience centers, Jamaica, Hartfield, Deltaville, and in Stormont for plastic bottles and metal cans, aluminum cans, steel cans, glass bottles. We also provide containers for mixed paper, and we also have containers for corrugated cardboard. We have been collecting those materials and selling them for many years. The, right now, the bottles and the cans and the plastic jugs, we haul to County Waste, their facility in New Kent County, just past the town of West Point. Every month, we send out bids to brokers and mills in the Richmond area, and we receive prices from them for the mixed paper and the corrugated cardboard. And we haul those to the highest bidder every single month. And this program has been generating a large revenue over the years. And we use that revenue to offset the fees that we charge to the five-member cities and counties. A couple of years ago, our total revenue for those projects was about, almost $200,000. As many of you know, a little over a year ago, China implemented what they called the National Sword. And the stated purpose was to eliminate contaminated recyclables from being delivered to the country. China has, for many, many years, been the largest purchaser of recycled goods in the world. Before the National Sword, about 60%, maybe 70%, the numbers vary depending upon what source you use, but a large portion of the mixed paper collected and generated and collected in the United States was sold to China. Last September 2017, China announced that they would not take any mixed paper that did not meet a 0.5% contamination rate. And that's essentially impossible to do without handpicking every single piece of paper. So it's something that can't be done mechanically. So in essence, what they were saying is that we're not going to take any more of your mixed paper. They also put bans on plastics, and many plastics were delivered from the United States to China. So January 2018, the recycling industry in the United States, and actually around the world, was turned on its head. There was a lot of panic, especially in the mixed paper. You know, those who bought mixed paper, those who sold mixed paper, those who used the mixed paper. And we were caught up in that. Two years ago, we were receiving about $150 a ton for mixed paper that we sold to mills in Richmond. About a year ago, it had dropped down to about $25, $35. And this past July, and I think it was in May, it dropped down to $2. And we were at $2, we were receiving $2 a ton for mixed paper for about four or five months. The last four, the last three, four months, mixed paper has come back, and we're now getting about $20 to $25 per ton. The people in the know, in the industry that we rely on, feel that the outlook is good for mixed paper. What we have to do as an industry is, one, we have to clean the mixed paper up, which is being done. Two, we need to find other alternatives and, you know, try and find ways to use the mixed paper that used to go to China. Vietnam and a number of other, India, another, many other overseas markets have taken additional paper. And the United States, we've seen new mills reopen and mills expand to take mixed paper. This current budget that we have put together, we have $100,000 in our budget for mixed paper, corrugated cardboard, and the containers. The containers generate very little revenue. One would like to think that there's a lot of money in aluminum. One would like to think that there's a lot of money in plastic. And they, the plastic, that PET, plastic water bottle, is very valuable. But we're in a situation where we don't have people nearby who will pay us for that material. Where we are in a good situation is the mixed paper and the corrugated cardboard. Corrugated cardboard has always been a moneymaker for us. Again, a couple of years ago, we were about $200 a ton. Right now, we're getting $78, $79 a ton. So while we have had a big hit for mixed paper, we've done okay with corrugated cardboard. And our budget that we have this coming fiscal year that we'll propose of $100,000, about $80,000 of that will be corrugated cardboard. That's where we're at with the recycling program. I'm positive, I'm optimistic for a positive future. There are markets out there, and one of the things that we do on a regular basis is we're always looking for somebody to buy this material. They're out there. I think our biggest challenge is, are the containers. The best, the best markets for us to purchase those containers are the companies that own processing facilities. And there's one in, actually, there's two in Chesterfield County, and there's one in Hampton. And then the next closest one going north is up in Manassas and then Elk Ridge, Maryland. So it's, it costs a lot of money to haul those. So we're somewhat limited with the containers. But the mixed paper and the corrugated cardboard, we've got a number of opportunities in the Richmond area. There are a number of mills that we can sell to, and they provide us a bid every single month, and we're very happy for that. Yes, sir?
The picking up of these bins for cardboard, mixed paper, glass, plastic, is that just when the superintendent at the convenience center calls you and tells you it's full? Or do you have a regular schedule? The reason I'm asking, we had an issue, I believe it was over 4th of July in Deltaville, where our beer and wine drinkers overwhelmed the receptacle for plastics and glass. And people were putting it on the ground, and it was just a thing. So can we anticipate bigger use on holiday weekends, or how do you arrange for your pickups?
The, well, let's start with, the corrugated cardboard is collected on a regular schedule. And that is, there's a frontload truck, there's a special truck that's used to collect that. The mixed paper and then the wine bottles are collected with the same trucks that we use to collect the trash. The system that we have set up is every morning, we ask every attendant at every site to call our dispatcher. And our dispatcher sits armed with her pencil and her pad. And we ask for the attendants to give us the status of every single container at their site. And she marks down the status, and when she's done with all 18 phone calls, she knows in her, you know, she knows, okay, this one needs a poll, this one might need a poll. So she prioritizes sites that need to be collected. So, and then we wait until the attendant calls and says it's at this percent, and then we dispatch the trucks to them. On any given day, we have about four or five trucks out on the road for all 20 sites.
We have a problem with 11,000 full-time residents, and then we might have 30,000 or 35,000 people in the county on a weekend, particularly a holiday weekend, if it's pretty, I don't know how you anticipate that, but-
I'd lower the percentage for that.
Couldn't you look at historical usage and sort of say, hey, we're in the red zone. It's July. They're going to be filling faster than normal. So if you're at 80%, it's too late to call. You should have called at 60%.
Well, and that's, and that's part of the, you know, our two dispatchers have been with us for, both of them have been 10-plus years. And they know that when Hartfield calls in at a certain percentage, it's different than when the site in Champlain calls in at a certain percentage. So they know, you know, they have a sense when things need to be done.
And they also know Hartfield's much more important than Champlain.
Today, it certainly is.
Good answer, Steve.
No, but, well, I actually, you know, it is more, I mean, it is much more pressing.
More volume.
Yeah, and they know that. The Hartfield site, the Brace Fork site, and the Central Garage site are the three sites.
Yeah, and so I don't think what we're trying to do is micromanage or better understand your business. It sounds like you're already doing some of this, and it's just the occasional time where you, you know, it's just an inordinate amount of volume. But I know for our community, this is one of the places I get more complaints than just about anything. So if there's any way to get to that last 99.9%, perfect, that's what they want.
Well, and interesting, we just, we had, today was our, we have, we annually have December, the first week of December, we always have meetings with all of our attendants. And it's too bad I didn't, well, it's too bad I didn't come earlier today, but it's too bad I didn't come yesterday for this. Our first attendant meeting was this morning, and one of our, one of the things that we want our attendants to do is, and this is something we need to ask your attendants to do too, is do, when somebody comes in with a recyclable material, do not turn them away. Do not let them put it in the trash. We provide, you know, we have the large 30-yard metal cans for them to put their containers in. We also provide the 95-gallon carts so that, and what we ask our attendants to do, and I'll ask Cecil to get in touch with all of your, with all of your sites, to make sure that you have those carts too. And those are, those are for overflow, so that we have, so when we have the situation where, where, you know, we called in at 80% in the morning. We know we had to be there at 2:00, and at 2:00, we had a flat tire.
So when do we get the carts at all of our facilities in Middlesex?
I'm talking to our attendants tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you've proven that that works elsewhere, so let's bring us up to the stand.
And-
Little totes have not worked.
I'm not talking the little guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, those-
We need big guys.
Yeah, yeah, the big carts. If you don't have the big carts-
Yeah, we've never had the big carts.
Steve, on the recycling, that's all really good information that I have heard numerous times, even in the context of what's happened, what's changed since the sword in China. Would it make sense for you to reach out to some of our local media and maybe see if they'd be interested in writing up a piece that explains to the citizenry, hey, guys, yeah, really, if you're not separating it, you're not helping the recycling cause?
One of, one of the reasons that we are getting $25 a ton now for mixed paper is that our material is very clean.
Okay.
And the, you know, the VIPS attendants, and we talked to the Middlesex County attendants about, you know, it's very simple, just walk over to that, walk over to the bin, slide open the door, stick your head in. If you see a plastic bag in there, pull it out. We get, we get good rates, and we've heard from the mills that they like our material because it is clean.
One of the thoughts that I had too was, and this is no berating of the attendants, but I've noticed they like to talk more than they like to take action. Perhaps we could do an incentivization program where they, you know, talk to people about corrugated. Bring your corrugated, bring it broken down. That is the one that is four times more valuable than this. Let's bring in more corrugated than any other jurisdiction. And then just by having that incentive program, you might see that that kind of education, right there at the spot where they're turning it in, is yielding results.
Let me, and just for point of clarification, the Middlesex County, the three convenience centers in Middlesex County are staffed by Middlesex County employees. Every other site in our system is staffed by VIPS employees. And that was a decision that was bade back in 1996. '96? Yeah. We do our best to work with the attendants. We do our best to pass along information to the attendants, but we don't have the same, how do you put, we don't have the same influence over the Middlesex County attendants that we do over all of the attendants at all of the other sites. But that's another, I'll pass that along to our supervisor, Cecil.
But recognizing the high quality and talent of the people of Middlesex, I can't see why that would be a problem, right?
Oh, I agree.
Steve, would it save us any money or would we make more money if we had a separate container for aluminum cans? Because if you get them all, if they're all aluminum cans, then you can crush them, and there's very little shipping cost for, per pound, crushed versus sending the motives commingled. And I've seen no similarity between aluminum can and a PVC, or not PVC, polyethylene container. It's hard for me to understand why you would want to co, I'm sure you wouldn't want them have, to have them commingled, except it's easier to talk people into collecting them that way.
Well, one thing would happen. If we took the aluminum cans out, then the $10 that we get would turn into zero, or we'd have to pay $5. Because, you know, we get $10 because they know that, that what we bring, because a good portion of the weight, what we bring them is glass. And glass has a very low value, if any value at all. The aluminum cans are by far, by far, the most valuable portion of that, of that stream. The next most valuable are those PET bottles.
So are you recommending that we keep them commingled as we are? It's the best solution for the current market, and there's really no reason? Because change has got to be expensive, right?
Well, I'm just, what I'm thinking is, is how do we, how do we, I mean, we can, we can separate the aluminum cans. We can tell people to put the aluminum cans in. But let me tell you a story, and you'll see where I'm going. One of the, as I mentioned, every single day, and they do it at the beginning, our attendants do it at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day, and they call in everything. And one of our attendants, one morning, went back and- And one of our attendants, one morning, uh, went back and, we, we recycle car batteries, and we put them on a pallet behind the building, and one morning, an attendant went in and s- and said, and went, called in the dispatcher and said, we have twelve car batteries. And at the end of the day, the attendant went back and reported, we have three car batteries. Um, so, you know, car batteries are, are, obviously are valuable, and somebody chose to, well, they recycled them for us.
Was in Champlain.
But they, uh, I don't, I don't know the name of the site, and it doesn't really make a difference. Um, I, 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 I wonder if the same kind of thing, if, if we, if we dutifully separated our aluminum, would the same thing happen with the aluminum cans? Um, I, I, um, I, I don't know where to sell aluminum, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure we could find it, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that.
Middlesex Metals takes it.
Yeah, I, I actually, yeah, yeah, they would.
What about, are we, are we selling to the West Point Paper Mill?
No, and the, the reason is, and, and I would, I would love to sell to West Point. Uh, the, the West Point Mill only takes baled corrugated, and because we do not have a facility to bail it, and this is one of the limitations we have, is we, we drive our truck around, um, and, and collect, uh, collect the corrugated cardboard, um, and, and then it's, the truck is full, and, you know, we, we end up driving it to Richmond now.
Have you pursued a bailing, bailing equipment?
Ask.
We had pursued a couple of years ago at MRF, which is a materials.
Recovery facility.
Facility, and we had a number of ideas for that, but the costs of the MRF were pretty.
Right, but not a full MRF, just the bailing.
Right, a, a bail, a baler is not an expensive piece of.
And it would be a local job, I'm getting all excited.
Yeah.
It's something that the committee can look at with the new maintenance facility, maybe.
Steve, isn't James City County part of your VIPS program as well?
Uh, Ja- uh, James City County is one of the, let me just, the, the ten members of the authority are Hampton, Picousin, York County, James City County, Williamsburg. We come across the river to this side, and it's Essex, Essex, King and Queen, King William, Matthews, and Middlesex. So Gloucester County is not a member, Newport News is not a member. James City County is part of a, a curbside recycling program that we do along with York County, uh, Picousin, and Williamsburg, but that's, that's not part of, this is a, this is a, a different project.
I just didn't know if you could piggyback on some of their resources, maybe, that's what I was, that was where my mind was going, but, sorry, I interrupted your discussion about a baler.
Okay, we, we always scheme.
Um, I just have a general question. Is it accurate still to say to Middlesex residents that by recycling any or all of these materials, as much as possible, you help the county save money on our total waste disposal bill?
The, the, well, let's, if, if we take the whole picture, yes.
Big picture.
Yes, big picture. Um, and, and what helps us is, is the corrugated cardboard.
Okay.
Um, because that, that is our, that, that's our, our real moneymaker, is, is the corrugated cardboard.
So, going to the big picture, if you assume you continue to recycle corrugated cardboard, um, the big savings in the big picture is to reduce the need for as many containers, is that accurate, especially plastic containers?
I'm.
In other words, isn't it more beneficial to our county environment in terms of costs to use fewer containers?
Well, I, I mean, we, the, the, the county pays, I mean, you pay disposal fees, so based on, you know, so every, when, when, when a resident comes up to one of your, if, when a resident comes up to one of your, uh, say Hartfield, and if they have a bunch of cardboard boxes, and they drop those cardboard boxes in the compactor, um, Middlesex County will end up paying twenty-three dollars a ton to have that disposed. If that person turns around and puts it in the, the recycling container, there's seventy-eight dollars a ton that goes back, uh, towards reducing the county's cost. So, you know, the best, the best way to reduce costs are to take the, the recyclable items, and especially the recyclable items that are valued, that bring, bring larger revenues back, uh, to the organization, you know, get that out of the waste stream and get the, into the, the recycling containers.
So, recycling is still important for an economic benefit to the county, especially recycling corrugated cardboard?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I, I'm, um, I, I'm here as a, as an advocate for recycling, um, and, and I think, you know, we, we have to, we have to look at beyond just the, you know, the cost today, and, you know, for, you know, does it make sense that, that every time we need a cor- a, a new corrugated box, that we cut down another tree? Does it make sense that every time we need another one of those, those plastic bottles, that we go get another barrel of crude oil? Um, so, you know, we, I, I, I think we have to think beyond, um, you know, beyond just, just, I, I think we need to focus be- beyond just, you know, what is the cost today? I think we need to look, look larger.
I, I certainly agree with you, Steve, but you, you mentioned, uh, the largest weight, uh, that we got, that we have is bottles, glass, which are virtually worthless, you're telling me. So, if I mix something that is very heavy and virtually worthless in with something like an aluminum can, which is worth quite a bit, I don't know what aluminum's, uh, worth right now, but, uh, aluminum is, is one of you, is probably, on a weight basis, your most valuable product. Doesn't it stand to reason that if we segregate those two and take the damn worthless bottles and throw them in the, uh, and bury them, you know, uh, you'll crush them when you, in the compactor, if you were to, uh, send them in?
I think, and, and what we have to look at is, um, we have to look at first, okay, here's, so we have the, the, the glass, the plastic, the aluminum, the steel, mixed together in one container. And so now what we have to do is, okay, what's our cost to pick this stuff up, bring it to where it needs to go, how much revenue are, are we going to get? So, that's, that's one set. And then we have to look at, okay, we've got another, so now what we're gonna do is we're gonna take the, the glass, we're gonna throw it out, we're gonna take the plastic, the, the plastic, the steel, put that in one can, and then we're gonna have another container with the aluminum, and what's it going to cost to separate those, and then take those individually to where they're gonna go, and how much, how much, um, are we gonna get from that? You know, um, it, it, it might make sense, um, and, and we will look at this, we will look at separating, separating those, those into their individual components and, and finding homes for them. The, um, the, the recycling industry over the last ten, fifteen years has been moving towards putting everything together into, you know, just what, what's called single stream. And the, the original concept was, well, it's easy for the homeowner to recycle, and they don't have to think about it, they just throw stuff in. And that, and, and that, that has caught on throughout the country, from one end to the other, everybody's doing single stream, and the processing facilities are all geared towards single stream processing. And that, that, that approach, in part, has been our, our undoing, because the, what was produced was a lower-grade mixed paper that eventually China said, no, we don't want it. And we're, we're starting to see the movement towards more, more separation. Um, and, you know, our system here on the Middle Peninsula is what's, well, I mean, I was gonna say a dual system, but actually, we have three streams, because we, we separate the corrugated, the mixed paper, and the containers. And, and I think, you know, I, I, I think you're right, it's, it's time, it's time for us to look at, um, separating out those, and, you know, it's, what it's gonna mean is, instead of, you know, three containers, we're now gonna have, you know, however many, you know, do we take the, the, the container stream and we, do we divide it into aluminum cans, steel cans, plastic, you know, that, you know, how far do we break it down? And then how do we keep our pilferers from, uh?
Still the battery.
Yeah. But, we'll look at it.
That's good. And I thought, you know, and, and I'm glad of that, I think we spent too much time on this. But, you know, basically, I know you came in to tell us about, you know, it was two-hundred dollars last year, we're getting a hundred dollars less this year, a hundred thousand dollars less. And, and the county of Middlesex is gonna have to just get the word out, you know, and then, then basically, that's it. I mean, uh, uh, we understand the economy's changing, as you know, and that's what you say, okay? But I, I think, I think we need to drag this out long enough, uh, Mr. Chairman.
No argument from me.
Okay.
Steve, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have Angela Shue here from the clerk's office?
She is, she is indeed.
I've not had the pleasure of meeting you, so that's the reason I had to ask that question.
I was looking forward to meeting everybody. Thanks for having me, and thanks for adding me to the agenda on such short notice. Um, my name's Angie Shue, I'm the clerk of General District Court for Matthews and Middlesex Counties. Um, office is located right over here, and that does accommodate both counties. There is an office in Matthews, although there's not the room to accommodate the files or the public, in my opinion, because they don't keep the front doors secure. Um, so we are here, fortunately, in Middlesex. Um, it's, um, a beautiful office over there, beautiful building. I started in June, um, and had a lot of challenges. I will say, this county has helped me greatly. Um, I know the newness, the shiny new wears off really quick, so I'm pestering everybody as much as I can, sorry, Matt.
You're not.
Yeah. So, when I started in June, I had one full-time position, deputy clerk, and then I had a wage employee. My very first day, my deputy clerk quit, leaving me by myself. Um, my experience is in North Carolina court system, so I was really at a loss, had a lot of help, but it's been an uphill battle. Um, did hire a new deputy clerk, and realized that the space that we were using in the office was not even accommodating the two of us and our wage person. So, with the help of the county, um, we went to.
And the state.
And the state, yes.
VDOT.
Yes, and went to VDOT, and, um, got what they didn't want, the furniture during the move that was left over there. Um, spent a day setting it up, and we were happy, really, it, it's fine, it would've worked fine, scratched up furniture, we didn't care, we had the surface space we needed, and it worked for me and the deputy clerk. I received a call about three weeks ago from Supreme Court that I have been given a, another full-time deputy clerk position, and that's why I'm here, um, because we're having growing pains now. If you haven't been over to my office, um, you're fortunate, because that means you're not paying a traffic ticket off.
That's right.
But, um, you walk in, and there's a little public area, and I actually have some photos here, um, but you walk in, and there's a public area, the county actually just put an eye up for us, because I noticed that at the security in the front of the courthouse, you couldn't see that public area. We do get some irate people in there, so that's been huge, we just feel so much safer in there because of that. But you walk in, and you see the deputy clerk, and then there's a wall, and on the other side of the wall, there is our files, and there's another desk that our wage person sits at, and the fire suppression system, and so forth. They really can't do a whole lot with that area, but it cuts our working area in half. Those deputy clerks need to be both in that front area, so we've just really been paying, plan, move in, and trying to make the furniture that we have work, and it's not gonna work, yes.
Can I just, I'm, I'm following in Mr. Jesse's heels here, uh, are you asking for additional funds for some furniture?
Yes, I am.
Do you know how much you're asking for?
Approximately thirty-five hundred.
Is that total, that would then be split?
Okay, I need to address that, because we split most everything with Matthews. Matthews has an office set up already, they have furniture there, we share that office with JDR, there's no way we can go to that office. But in all honesty, I don't feel like it's fair to go to them and ask for furniture to be put in a Middlesex County building. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that to them either, I, I don't think it's fair to do that.
Isn't it Middlesex County that got the additional position?
It, it, no, it's Middlesex Matthews County.
Oh, I suppose.
So, I will be using that position to put somebody over there one day a week to take funds over there, because right now, we take all the payments here in this office.
Have, have we looked at all other VDOT-type used furniture options? There's nothing laying around?
We've got a couple of surplus options we've looked at.
Yeah. Part of, part of the problem has been with the used furniture is that it's all so big.
It's huge, it's huge furniture.
And it just won't fit into her space.
I'm gonna pass these around, this is just our front area, this is the office where that position is sitting right now, um, it's behind this, the, the door, in our file area, and then this is the area that we have to work with, that has the furniture that we've gotten from VDOT in there now. I didn't make copies.
Is the new deputy, uh, working now?
She is, she's sorry, um, Monday.
So, the need is pressing?
It is, quickly realized that it's not gonna work.
What I'm concerned about is in-between budget cycle requests for money, it just, it, it, if we, we have emergencies and have things that come up, we don't have any choice, a roof repair, or HVAC, or something goes down, and I'm just, I'm completely with you as to what your needs are, and, and I don't have to think I have any problem with that amount of money, I'm just concerned about requests that come in, uh, in-between budget cycles, and we just, we, we don't budget for those sorts of things, since we've got enough things that we have zero control over and can't not do.
How often is it that we have gifted employees, in other words, we just, we just, we got another one?
Yeah, the state, and this is a state-funded position.
Right, but how, I mean, does this happen regularly, or is this pretty out of?
I think this is the first time it's happened since I've been here.
Kind of, I don't know that it meets the qualification of emergency, but it has, it is very different from our typical budget cycle, because I share your, your same thinking, except for, okay, this has never happened before, or not in recent memory.
And she has zero money in her financial line.
Angela, you may be.
I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to just get it out of the way and, and let it go.
Would you like to make a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, if they need it in there, let's go ahead and get it out of the way, it won't have to do it no more.
I second Mr. Jesse's motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Well, I think Betty's trying.
I just, I just wanna make sure, are we doing this as a transfer from our contingency line?
Yeah.
Yeah, contingency line.
And my motion, or I still second Mr. Jesse's motion.
And I would just add, Angela may be reluctant to ask Matthews County to pony up, but I will.
Okay.
I just wanted that authorization from the board, 'cause I'm good at that.
All right, we have a motion duly seconded for up to thirty-five hundred dollars in office furniture for the new deputy clerk. Any further discussion?
I, I would just add that we've already heard of turnover in that department, uh, the state clearly sees the need, so I, I appreciate Mrs. Shue coming hat in hand and making a request like this as a relatively new employee, I hope you're not at all nervous about doing it.
Not at all, I really appreciate it. I was actually on the board of directors for, um, Boys and Girls Club, but it was much more casual than this. A little bit more intimidating here, but thank you so very much.
In that case, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
All great.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And I'll try to claw some back from Matthews, don't worry.
Thank you.
No traffic tickets. Okay, uh, let's see, we didn't get anybody from VDOT, so that puts us out of agency and staff reports.
Yeah, we saw getting an email from them, we'll follow up with VDOT.
Okay, uh, regular agenda items, I believe Betty has a budget transfer request.
Regular agenda items, I believe Betty has a budget transfer request from page 210.
210? Yes. We were notified a couple of weeks ago that we've already run through the $25,000 in non-secured detention fees that the board approved back in September. And so, I'm coming to you requesting an additional $25,000 be transferred from contingency to pre-purchase in another 192 days. And that hopefully will cover, that will cover about three months for two kids. We might have a third kid, so I probably will be coming back to you again. But it's still cheaper to do this than to...
Than to do it day by day.
Do it day by day, or...
Or Meramatt.
Or Meramatt.
If we're gonna see this again, as you, it sounds like you suspect, when you bring this to us, would you show us that original decision that we made to purchase in the way that we did, and how we're looking against that decision now that we're...
Yes.
That would make it so much more crystal clear.
Okay.
We do encourage the judge to exercise this option when she can, because it is a less expensive alternative than Meramatt.
Would you entertain a motion?
The chair would certainly do that.
I move that we approve budget transfer request FY 2019-10.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. All righty. Item B, I believe Betty, you've got that one too, the yearbook ad.
That's a request from the high school yearbook staff, who's asked if you would like to purchase another ad for the yearbook, and...
Have we indeed been doing this for four years?
Yeah, I've been doing it for multiple years.
I'm surprised.
More than, more than four.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes they've been black and white, sometimes they've been, and I think I emailed that out to you. Some have been black and white, some have been half-page, some have been full-page. And what we do is send them the same picture that's on the website of the Board of Supervisors. That's all we do.
Well, I certainly...
Unless you wanna re-post.
That's gonna change one of our votes, it sounds like.
I certainly favor helping out any of our organizations within the school system and without. We've got issues of buying tables at certain events. We've got issues with making contributions to Flag Days and other events, and I don't want to be the bah humbug. I will, I will favor this for this year, because we've done it for so many years in the past. I would just ask that the board look at these sorts of contributions moving forward, because they add up. And I think that it wouldn't hurt for us to have a feel for what we do and don't contribute to, because the taxpayers should get some value for their dollars.
Right.
Thank you very much.
I just, I would like for us to consider that moving forward. I don't wanna be the bah humbug that quashes something we've been doing for a long time here, so.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder, and I haven't seen the ad before and been part of it, but would it be appropriate to do a half-page ad and do a congratulations to the teacher who won the...
Laney Ashford.
Yes.
I think that would be...
Instead of our picture.
Yeah.
Or, you know, I mean, say congratulations from the Board of Supervisors, but, I mean, that's a commemoration that fits into this school year.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. Or for consideration. Is that, is that below this whole thing that we've been doing?
You can do whatever you want. She's not at that school, and she's, she's at a different school.
Except the middle school.
Yeah.
But I think she will also get her recognition anyway, and, you know, this is the high school, really.
Okay.
That's not the teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I think she would get her, she would get her...
Well, maybe not that, but rather than the Board of Supervisors as an ad, and some thank you to the teachers for something that...
Well, is there a Teacher of the Year?
Thank you for the teachers who are retiring that year, or something.
I think, what I like about your point is get our friggin' pictures out of it.
Yeah, and say thank you to someone.
And I think we trust staff with thanking, you know, something appropriate about the senior class or the teachers at the high school.
Exactly.
It's the, it's the high school yearbook, but I think we've spent enough time on it.
Did you say a half-page?
I think the motion was a half-page.
I favor a half-page, yes.
Half-page, black and white, is $250.
Yes. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I second.
Motion duly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. All right, Betty, you're back up on deck again with appointments.
In your packet, you have a resignation letter from Chris Jones, who is asked to resign from the Airport Committee effective December 31st. And you also have an appointment memo in there from me, or from Susan, that shows your current positions that are available, and that we have only the one applicant for the Airport Committee.
So, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the resignation of Chris Jones and approve the appointment of Oscar Barber to the Airport Committee.
Would that be to fill Randy Coulson's expired term, because Chris is still on until the end of the year? Just as a technicality?
Yes. Oscar would be taking Randy Coulson.
For that second.
Yes.
Four-year term.
His term is already... Yep.
Very good. Pete, does that second still carry for that amendment motion?
That I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the appointment?
Real quick, how long, Jones, he's been on?
He's been on, I think it's 26 years.
I think we have to have a recognition for him too.
Yes. We'll put that on January...
Very good. You'd like to include that?
Yeah, I'd like to include that.
Okay. Pete, you okay with including that in the motion?
Certainly, yes.
Any further discussion?
Thank you. Yeah.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. County attorney updates.
Well, buckle up, folks.
Oh, my God.
This could be my, you know, knock on wood, you know? This could be my last one that I get to grace you with for a little bit. Nope, just have...
I saw that coming. Buckle up. Well, thank you, Heather, and...
You're welcome. You might see me in January, we don't know.
Well, the best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Matthew, you got some county attorney wisdom to share with us?
For the sake of the time, I will be very, very brief. I did have a communication with Keith Hodges's office. Matthews County has been added to our request for authorization to levy up to 5% lodging tax. It's an authorization bill to add us to the 55 other counties in the Commonwealth of Virginia that currently have that authorization from the General Assembly. There are a total of four other counties that have specific code sections that address their lodging tax levies, such as Bath County, Arlington, Roanoke, and Fairfax. So, we would be added to a list of some 59 total that have that authorization. It's my understanding that's going through in this session, and that was all ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Unfinished business, start with Mr. Mansfield. Do you have anything? Nope. Mr. Jesse?
No.
Mr. Hope does not. Mr. Coates does not.
You're talking about unfinished business? No.
So, we'll stay with Ms. Swinehart on new business and move back across the board.
Do you have any new business?
No.
No. John? I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but I'm deeply concerned with the potential arson that we have in the county. And I think maybe it would be appropriate at next month's meeting to have maybe an update from the sheriff as to what we're doing. And I'm open, I'm open to recommendations from other board members, but I just, I don't know what we're really doing about it. And it may be one of those things that until you catch the guy, it's best that we don't know what you're doing about it.
Well, there's action being, you know, investigation, put it that way. Investigation, yeah.
Very good point. I have none. Mr. Jesse? Mr. Mansfield? All righty, that brings us to supervisor comments and reports. Maybe we can just keep these moving right along. Mr. Mansfield?
Pass.
Mr. Jesse?
I'll be quick. I attended the 84th Annual Baker Convention. The opening session, we did have Ralph Norman, and he explained that, you know, as the normal thing, unemployment is 2.9 lowest in 10 years. Fourth state in the whole United States of doing business in, and in Virginia. And after, as you know, you can't really grow, grow business out broadband in rural areas. Number-one industry is forestry, second is agriculture. We have 38 parks, 250 breweries, 250 wineries, and then he said, "When you have the Austria Trail, you know what you can get when you combine that all together." I'm just being real quick.
You poked our attention when you said wineries.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it was interesting, and it was very well-attended. And we had quite a few other things going on, but I also attended the PDC and the normal business that, that is usual, you know? We discussed, I'll just say a few things that Louis talked about. It was, he also discussed about the bills that are coming up for the general center. Similarly, there's 15 bills that, that he's, that is allowed for Keith Hodges to put in in place. And that was it. It was just a busy, a busy month. Went to the solar farm, that was very well-attended, very, very interesting. Did it say that that solar farm can generate about 3,900 homes, in that range? And it was very interesting, because some people asked some information, you know, when the current is, when the sun is down, you know, power's put back on the grid to turn them back, and different things like that. Because, you know, as you think about it, you gotta understand the days that when you don't have sunlight, power's put back from the grid to the solar farm. And that's it for my committee. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Coates?
On the 8th, I had a broadband meeting. On the 14th, I helped take down the flags for Heroes. On the 15th, I had a town hall at Preciate Community Center. Planning on doing one quarterly on the 15th to make it easier for people to just know that it's on the 15th quarterly. I've been meeting with Tim Dos about doing solar, and we may have a better chance to do something there that could take their usage down and use some forest land that I found out from the Department of Forestry. It's long overdue for them to harvest that forest. So, did a solar presentation at Kiwanis, did a remote help with an engineering project for Clark Laster's math class, where they were building with spaghetti noodles and, anyway. Helped put in tether ball, funnel ball, and a shade structure, or at least did the first part of the concrete work behind the elementary school. I also attended on the 1st of December in Gloucester County at their courthouse. A number of their public school students were singing caroling songs at their courthouse, and I thought, there is no reason we shouldn't be encouraging our public schools to bring the kids out and sing out in front of this beautiful building. It was a really neat event, and they had perfect weather for it, but it's an idea. Like I said, I met with the Department of Forestry about behind the Middle Sector, Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center, but also looking at the bus garage behind the elementary school, and it's confirmed that that timber behind the elementary school is not of any significant value. Spoke last night at the Middlesex Sports Shooting Club in front of a really large crowd. It was a lot of fun. And I had the joint finance committee between the school board, and I also was at the solar tour. I just wanna note one thing, I'm trying to go fast too. There are some amazing opportunities for the broadband authority right now. We're piggybacking off of the Middlesex Water Authority, and we're trying to get easements at the same time, but there's also a lot of money coming out of the state. They're very serious about exactly who we are, which is a rural underserved or unserved community. And one of the big breaking news, I think, that's coming out right now is that Dominion is seriously looking into using their infrastructure to help support getting broadband out. And there's, there's a lot of financing in the broadband authority, has really been working overtime to find grant opportunities and take advantage, and really get us to a place where our broadband is up to snuff. Other than that, I'm just working on finishing up the high school solar project and potentially something at the kid building that I heard today. It won't be very big, but with all the other projects we're doing, they might just throw it in for free. That's it?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Swinehart?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the organizers of the Veterans Day commemoration, and those who participated here at the courthouse. It was a very nicely-done event, and I was glad to be part of that. And the town hall, I would note that the variety of subjects that citizens have interest in and just want updates on is, is interesting. It's not one topic. People really wanna know what's going on. And I will also note that I still get an awful lot of questions about the Cook's Corner Project and the water project that reflect some misinformation. So, I will be talking, but I think I just want you all to be aware that we still have some work to do there, so citizens know what the money's going for, or what the county is trying to accomplish there in terms of communication. And in that, I did some research on bike trails in South Carolina.
Thank you, man. Let's see, I had the privilege of attending the Veterans Day luncheon at Christ Church Parish, which has become somewhat of an annual event with them. I had the honor and the privilege of emceeing the Veterans Day celebration here at the courthouse that Kathy was relating to. If you haven't been to that, you really do need to go for various reasons. This was my first one, but it was a very, very, very nice, nice affair. Budget and finance with the schools, Water Authority, Airport Committee. Attended the county Christmas party, and it was a great job done by Rebecca Morgan and her folks from the Department of Social Services. And I won't relate to the skit that Matt and Kathy did, but they were, they were bombarded with projectiles as they went through that, so that was fun. And I also was with Wayne and John at the solar farm tour. And that concludes my comments, and I propose that that would move us into recess until our 7:00 PM public meeting. Very good. Board of Supervisors meeting in the form of a public hearing. We have two items of business on the public hearing, and then a closed session. So, David, I would say you're...
Yes, I'm on that. This is ordinance amendment 2018-04. Of course, this was initiated by the planning commission. It was initiated essentially on the coattails of the last special exception that the board heard that they approved, whereas we had a accessory structure located across a right away from a lot contained in a principal building. This is, was allowed by special exception per section, section 1524. And of course, the purpose of this request is to allow accessory structures to permitted use on an adjoining lot or lot immediately across a right away from a lot contained in a principal building. And this would apply to all zoning districts pursuant to Article 15, Section 1524, as amended. Previously, the use was only allowed as a special exception use. Of course, your board packet has some background on this particular ordinance, whereas I think I mentioned that it was, we've had this installed probably going close to eight or 10 years. We haven't had any issues with it, so the planning commission felt compelled to bring forth this amendment. I'm not gonna read this verbatim, but you can see the only changes in this ordinance are those that are highlighted in yellow. Originally, that where it said by right, said special exception. All other, as you, as we go through this, you'll see that nothing's changed, the conditions will stay in place. We're not reducing any of the conditions that go with this. And the only amendment we have, these are all currently in the ordinance as they are here. And we went through this.[1703.69] And we went through this, all this is the same. And Ms. Lewis and I consulted on this, and we both were under agreement, in the agreement that we should have some way to unwind this or take this encumbrance off the property in case a homeowner brings their property into compliance, either by building a structure, primary home, or structure on the lot, thus making it conforming, or vacating a property line that would be next door, thusly it would be a conforming lot. This gives us an avenue to take that encumbrance off that property. And that's, as a recorded, you can read this, as a recorded deed covenant memorandum of understanding should run with the affected properties and shall not be released without written permission of the Middlesex County Zoning Administrator or the Middlesex County Planning Director. Amended this date, which should be the date that it's approved, yeah, this date. Okay, then we'll get to recommendations. Staff recommends approval of this amendment as submitted. And the Planning Commission voted nine to zero, with two absent, to approve this particular ordinance amendment. It's fairly straightforward. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer any.
And we've prepared a deed covenant template for people to fill out as well.
We have, that's for the people that are at point, and we have a template. And thank God we have Ms. Lewis here now to help us with that, so. And she, whenever we get that, both her and I would review that deed covenant for compliance to make sure it handles everything we're looking for.
Any questions of Mr. Kretz? Do we have any members of the public that would like to address the subject? Hearing none, we have no public comment. So, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion on this proposed amendment.
I make the motion to approve the amendment 2018-04.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and duly seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered. Mr. Kretz, would you like to get back up again?
This is actually homeowners association...
Oh, okay.
That's it for him.
The proposed ordinance authorizing the use of golf carts and utility vehicles on Virginia routes 1041, 1090, 1091, 92, 93, 94. Would the folks representing that like to come forward?
Joe Sucker, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm Donna Vidler. I'm Secretary of the Whiting Creek Property Owners Association.
Welcome.
Thank you. And we've had discussions about this in the last couple of years. It's been in our minutes, and everyone is in favor of it. I've heard no one have any objection.
Madam County Attorney, I think you had some questions on previous ordinances, or those been satisfied?
Oh, no, in the drafting, I updated this, I mean, I don't, I assume your entity has had a chance to review. I did make some changes to the initial draft that was provided because it was outdated.
Okay.
Referencing up-to-date code sections.
Okay. I have not seen that.
Well, it's here, we can...
Okay.
Yeah, so, take a moment.
Right.
Mm-hmm, it would not apply. So, the changes that I made for the board and for the public is there were references to code sections that were no longer in effect, so I updated that. That's in the preamble.
Okay.
The other thing I changed in the preamble, preamble, is the reference to private roads because the enabling authority did not give this Board of Supervisors the authority to regulate your private roads. I did confer with our zoning administrator, who believes that there's a very limited area that is actually a private road in your subdivision. So, that did not seem to have any detrimental impact. Then under, you'll see there's a golf cart definition, which is pretty basic, and a utility definition. I did take the utility vehicle definition and confirm that's what the code says, so that's redundancy there. And then under section two, again, it's citing the parts of the road that this would apply to. So, under this, no golf carts or utility vehicles may operate on a highway where there's a higher speed limit than 25 miles per hour. That was the same. Section B was the same, where you cannot operate it on a public highway unless you have a valid driver's license. Section C is the same, this is required in the statute. You have to have a slow-moving vehicle sign on your golf cart. Section D is part of the code, and it's the same, where you can only operate between sunrise and sunset. My next change would be section E. That stays the same. You can't operate them in a way in which you would cause issues with the flow of traffic. Section F is the only one that I added, where I've said that when you're operating these, the motor vehicle, the same rules of the motor vehicle laws while you're traveling on public highways would apply to the golf carts. That was my only change.
Okay.
So, there were three. I updated a code section, I removed a private road reference, and I added subsection F.
Okay.
And those are in compliance with...
And the way I understand it, it only goes up to the Whiting Creek sign, doesn't actually go all the way to 33?
It would only be...
I think you probably need to set that limit with VDOT, because it's my understanding, if you have a 25 mile per hour speed limit, it can go up to that point.
The 33?
Yeah, you don't want to drive them on 33.
No, no, I would like to see the speed limit 25 as soon as you come in.
Right.
Instead of having that racing to the 33.
Is the speed limit 35 to that sign?
It's 35 all the way down to just where you turn right to go to your house.
Okay, well, then, that would be where the zone would start, because you can only do it on 25 mile per hour. Unless you adjust the speed limit all the way back up to the sign. And that's something the homeowners association can request from VDOT.
Oh, okay, I thought this was...
Yeah, we, yeah, that would have to go to VDOT.
Okay, yeah. All right, I think we were under the impression that once it was a golf cart community, it automatically became 25.
When one begets the other, you gotta do the 25 first, and then, yeah.
Ah, okay, okay. That's different than what we were told.
Yeah, VDOT will have to determine that. They shouldn't have any problem with it, because it's a subdivision, private subdivision roads. And, well, it's public roads, but in a subdivision, and, you know, they'll give some wide latitude to that.
Okay.
To the homeowners association's desire for a speed limit in there. When it curves, you shouldn't have any problem anyway.
Yeah, I think we had tried before, and we thought this was the way around that, so, guess we'll try again.
Any other questions or comments?
For the public?
Well, I was going to ask from the board, and then ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak for or against. We're for it, okay? And you said every homeowner that has spoken has spoken in favor.
Yeah, I have not heard anyone with any reservations.
Very good. In that case, the chair is in a position to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the golf cart ordinance for Whiting Creek subdivision.
Motion made.
I'll second the motion.
Duly seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a quick, well, before you go into closed session, can I have a quick recess, or kind of be excused to talk to them real quick?
Yes.
Very good.
We can go ahead and get to business of going into closed session, by the way.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion from the board to convene in a closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A3, NA8. This is for the discussion and/or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and to consult with legal counsel regarding such acquisition.
So, move. We have a motion. Second. Duly seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
All right. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to certify the following statement. To the best of the members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted in the motion by which the closed session was called was considered or discussed in said closed session.
So, move. Second. Motion seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered. Madam County Attorney, if I understood correctly, you would read the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you need a motion from your board to authorize you as the chairman of this Board of Supervisors to sign the October, the purchase agreement dated October 17th, 2018, to purchase the property located at 105 Bowden Street in Saluda, Virginia. It's approximately 1.73 acres with the following revisions, and authorize the county attorney to make said revisions. Revision number one, the purchase price shall be reduced from 710, 710,000 to 690,000. Revision number two, the evaluation period shall be changed from November 30th of 2018 to December 6th of 2018. Revision number three, the closing of the property shall occur on or before. It shall be changed from December 21st to December 28th of 2018. Additionally, within the closing paragraph, it will be revised to state that time is of the essence for the seller to connect to the Hampton HRSD, excuse me, Hampton Road Service District sewer, existing sewer line. And the seller shall connect to said sewer line on or before June 30th of 2019. Those are all the revisions, and the motion would authorize me to make said revisions, and then for the chairman to sign with the revisions made.
Which would be planned to occur tomorrow.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chairman.
But that just covers my concern.
Yes.
Once we go public, somebody's slipping in at 700. Okay, does everybody understand the changes to the contract? And if that's what you would like me to do, I will entertain a motion to do so. So, move. Second. Motion duly seconded, is there any further discussion? And I do appreciate everybody's discussion on this, because I think we have really covered the waterfront on it. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered. And by the way, John couldn't be here, but he did tell me that he was in agreement with everything we were going to talk about.
And the only thing left, Mr. Chairman, is there still a public comment on your...
Correct. And I'll now open the floor to public comment. Hearing none, I'll close the floor to public comment, and entertain a motion for adjournment.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to swoop in real quick. The board has been invited to take a tour of the shuckless oyster facility Mr. Tolanali operates in Topping, either prior to the board meeting on January the 2nd or during its recess of January the 2nd. This is the pressurized equipment that shucks the oyster through pressure. He's extended an offer to the board to tour the facility. If the board's desire is to do so, we need to disclose that in this meeting and let the media know that your intentions are to tour the facility either before the meeting or during recess.
It's too soon to know, but at this point, we don't know of any public hearings or anything that we'll have that night. And I guess it would not be prudent to plan now not to have one if something legitimately came up, am I correct in that? So, I would say that we need to try to go before the meeting, because even if we had a full two hours, to go from here to Topping, have an hors d'oeuvre, look at some oyster shucking, and get back here by 7:00 o'clock is not going to be happening.
Say 1:00?
I think 1:00 would be...
No, it depends on how deep the snow going to be.
That's right, oh, I hadn't thought about that.
Well, if it snows, we'll have to cancel anyway.
Just remember, take joy in that snow. Is that good? You want to talk to him?
Better work.
Yeah, I'll put the deuce and the half on, and we'll...
Yeah, we all jump in the hauling truck, yeah, the deuce and the half.
All right, we have a motion for adjournment. So, move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Thank you, folks.